Okay, good afternoon to everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified School District. I'll call the meeting to order and ask is there any requests for public comment on items not on the agenda? There's none. And since there is none, we will recess to closed session. So thank you very much. We'll be back in an hour and a half at 5:30 roughly. Okay, we will reconvene to open session now. I will report out that we took no, the board took no action during closed session. I'll also point out that we have four board members in the room and trustee Cusiak is available to us by telephone. He is out of town. And he's in the meeting, so to speak. So welcome, Michael. First item is the approval of the agenda. We have a slight, slightly amended personnel report. Are there any other amendments?
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dot. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll start the vote. Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. You're a long way away. Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, that makes it five to zero. The motion passes. Well, we're on to the mission statement, Dolly.
Mission statement. In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, Dolly. I did want to make one comment here that we are in the boardroom and we have no masks and no, no barriers. The, the, the rules changed
Yesterday.
Yesterday. The ever-changing rules. Okay, on to public comment. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each others, respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must submit a request to address the board Google form during the start of the agenda item, which is available on our website. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. So do we have any reports from our bargaining units? I suspected that might be the answer. So we'll move on to, I think our superintendent wants to say something.
Yes, I would like to ask for a personal point of privilege. This will be, this is Dr. Beat's last meeting with us and this is, this is going to be really hard for us to actually, you know, just in, in a few minutes, try to sum up our appreciation for her because she's done such an amazing job and has been such a partner. So we actually have something we want to read, a proclamation, and we'll get started.
This is Castro Valley Unified School District Special Proclamation, June 23rd, 2021, in recognition of Dr. Sherry Beats. Whereas the governing board for the Castro Valley Unified School District takes great pride in the quality of service performed by all district employees. And whereas Dr. Sherry Beats has been a leader supporting staff and students in the Castro Valley Unified School District, she has been a true advocate for students as her highest priority and
Whereas during her career of 43 years in education, she has served as a teacher, site administrator, and a district administrator. And whereas the last 16 years, Sherry Beats has led CV USD's Human Resources, Human Resource Department exceptionally well, recruiting the highest quality candidates for every certified and classified position in the district and
Whereas she has represented the Castro Valley Unified School District at the county by actively participating in program development in several areas and has mentored humans, resources administrators throughout the county and beyond. And whereas she has always displayed the highest moral standards and treated people fairly with dignity and respect, even in the most difficult situations and
Whereas she has led the Association of California School Administrators Human Resources Academy for many years to help groom the next generation of district leaders and will continue to support administrators throughout the state for years to come in retirement. And whereas her leadership in negotiations with employee unions have been collaborative and respectful, resulting in agreements to provide students the highest quality education and
Whereas Dr. Beats has been an integral part of the executive cabinet working closely with other assistant superintendents, the superintendent and the governing board to support our district's missing, mission and
Whereas she has always been an anchor of stability and instrumental in the progress we have made as district and
Therefore, therefore let it be known by all present that this board hereby commends Dr. Beats, Dr. Sherry Beats for her exemplary and dedicated service to students, staff, and the community. And now let it be resolved that the members of the governance team share with Dr. Beats their deepest gratitude for her dedication and professionalism to the Castro Valley Unified School District and offer their sincerest and best wishes in her retirement. And we are going to miss you dearly. And with that, I would like to share, it's, I can't carry it.
But we wanted you to have this plant and you to plant in your backyard and watch it grow like you have helped us grow. Thank you guys very much. It's been, it's been great. You guys really do a lot, a lot of really good things or so. And I know you'll keep doing it and you're just gonna get rid of this old person and get somebody that's new and it's all good. So thank you very much.
We have a public comment.
I'm here. So thank you for the opportunity to recognize Dr. Beats upon her retirement. I was trying to figure out a way to demonstrate Sherry's contributions to the district and honor her grace, compassion, and dignity she used in her position. Many of the occasions are prominent to me because they were marked with flowers and notes of thanks and encouragement. The first time I remember sending Sherry flowers was when she received her PhD. We were so proud of her. Over the years, there have been many occasions to celebrate negotiations, hirings, firings, meeting apologies, thank yous, scary health traumas, extended personnel hearings, all of which she emerged from with great aplomb. Castro Valley Unified School District is also proud of Sherry's recent recognition as California's top human resources honoree. That merited at least two huge bouquets, much to Sherry's chagrin. We all knew it and it was great that the state figured it out too. Today's flowers were two outrageously beautiful bright pink orchids to mark Sherry's transition to a home base to enjoy an easier, simpler life with one less phone. It's been a great privilege to work with you. I'm holding out though on your real celebration gift. And I thought there would be video, but I'm holding up a box of Buster bars. You'll have to come by after retirement to get this out of my freezer. Congratulations and best wishes, Sherry.
Are there others?
We have two other public comments, but it really has to do with the superintendent.
Okay. So that's we're done with public comment. They're not dealing with, or on items that are not on the agenda. Excuse me, tongue tied. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is an action item.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll move on to the vote. Lavender?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll make it five to nothing and consent agenda is approved. Now we're down to the reports, discussion, and action items. Item seven, superintendent's update.
All right. So tonight we're gonna, I just wanted to update you a little bit about the summer and what's going on. OSHA and CDBH guidelines that has allowed us to do what we're doing today and planning for the next full year during the summer. It's in, summer school is in full swing. It looks great. We've been visiting. Child nutrition is available during summer school. COVID testing is available over the summer and now we have had two vaccination sites. And I want to thank Suzie and her team for making that happen, working with Safeway. We are working with La Familia, their mobile vaccination to come to CV, to Castro Valley as well. And Measure G projects are continuing this summer. So I want to thank Amy for putting this together, kind of looking at all of the, the guidelines coming from everywhere and sharing this with our employees and everybody else that these are the guidelines that based on the guidelines, you will see that, for example, indoor mask requirement, outdoor mask requirement for employees. And you will see that the district office employees who are fully vaccinated are not required to wear a mask, but unvaccinated and not fully vaccinated are. And that, but at the school site, because we have, we have students, the requirement is that, that they do wear masks inside, vaccinated or unvaccinated. And then planning for 21, 22, fully in-person virtual option for families unable to attend. We are still waiting for trailer bills. We actually looked at some language, have been communicating with the state officials about some of the things that, that they've actually been discussing that would be helpful and some who we feel really would be just cumbersome and not helpful. So hopefully they will take our, all of our feedback from around the state. We're going to be planning throughout the summer and we have started, we haven't stopped. Teacher workday is August 9th and then the first day of students is August 10th. So we're excited to have our students back, maintenance and cleaning to prepare for 21, 22 have all begun. And then we're continuing to hire new staff and professional development is being provided. And then board meetings in person, I said, starting in August, meaning in person, you know, where we can have an audience. I think that's it. That's all the report I had. If you have any questions, we'll keep communicating with families about any guidelines they come forward and the school sites will be sending information out as we get closer.
Well, I'd like to say that I appreciate your guidance through all of this because we have had to deal with almost daily changing regulations from several regulatory agencies, like, you know, the CDC, California Public Health, Alameda County Public Health, Cal OSHA. And they've not always been in sync with each other. Yet we have to abide by the strictest of those. And we don't have a choice in that. But being able to figure out where we are in this is not easy. It just changed again yesterday. So I mean, we're happy with the way it's going. But we're not under the same rules as the rest of the community. Are there any other comments or questions right fast for the superintendent here?
Let's have a comment in the question.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
No, no worries. Yeah, I, I can only imagine the contrast between last summer and this summer. So I, I hope you are going to take some time off, Parveen, but thank you for your diligence here and communicating stuff with us. Do you have a sense, just maybe help me and try, I'm still new at understanding the timeline with the governor and trailer bills, et cetera. When do you think we'll, things will settle in Sacramento about what we know of anything coming from them? Either funding or any other new regulations we might see coming up? Related, returning to school.
Yeah, funding needs to be passed by the end of June for legislators to actually be allowed to get paid. So that's, we're good with that. I think there's conversation. So the legislators actually are done. It's the governor. So that's, that's the back and forth and most of the conversation and Suzie can chime in, most of the conversation we're hearing is not about Prop 98 dollars. It's outside of Prop 98. So there's just some clarification that needs to get done there. As far as trailer bills, it all depends. I mean, we're hoping by the end of June. But I'm, you know, sometimes then there are more regulations that come. So Suzie, do you have anything to add? So the only trailer bill really that we're watching in this case is the one around virtual, you know, and it, it's around attendance, live instruction versus not live instruction for that. But other than that, fully in person, they've basically removed all the restrictions of, you know, distancing, social distancing and all of that, except for masking at this point.
So I think we have two comments. You said two public comments. You want to bring those in now?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Welcome to our meeting.
So I have a question. First, given your willingness to completely obliterate an entire year and a quarter of school while districts were open all over the country and the state, private schools, et cetera, and they suffered absolutely zero noticeable consequences. Why should we give you credit or think that you are going to open and fall and importantly, stay open? Will one case make you shut down, two cases, 20 cases? Because there's probably going to be a non-zero number of cases. And I have utterly no confidence that you guys will keep the schools open. So do you have any assurances for parents that you actually will keep the school open? Even though there might be a case or two that pop up. Second point. Now, I know you, you like to hide behind the CDPH guidelines on masks and yeah, I know there, there might be a scary person from Sacramento coming down to, you know, yell at you for kids wearing masks. But have you ever considered actually going back to Sacramento and saying, you know what? Kids don't need masks. They don't. There's no evidence that it helps. And wearing them is really tantamount to child abuse and for no appreciable good reason. So yeah, yeah, okay. You know Sacramento is telling everyone they need to wear masks stupidly, even though you're vaccinated. Have you ever considered, and you know, maybe pushing back just a little bit on that because it is ridiculous? So those are just a couple of points for this evening.
Well, I think we could respond to that if you want to.
I don't think we need to.
You don't need to, okay. We're clearly, we have to obey the law. We're a public entity and we have to obey the law, regardless of what we want to do. And we are in very close contact with the legislature and the governor's office and the county almost on a daily basis. So the next person, please. Robert? Robert?
Hi, this is Robert.
Yeah, welcome to our meeting, Robert.
Hi, thank you. I just had a quick concern. I used to be a geneticist and I did studies in cystic fibrosis and developing therapies for premature babies, lung therapies. So, and I stayed up with the science. This week, Nature Medicine released an article saying that 50% of the under 30s who develop COVID have lung COVID. And also this week, it turns out that even if you're fully vaccinated, 10% of people who are fully vaccinated, even with the Pfizer, can still develop the Delta variant. So my concern is we committed our daughter to the in-person. But with the Delta variant news coming out in the last few weeks, we want to switch to virtual and how do we go about doing that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I mean, we keep saying we are not going to make comment, we're public comment, but I think it's in this case, I just want to let families know that that is why we have the virtual option available. And all you have to, we actually asked folks who was interested and planned accordingly. So hopefully you had that information and if not, you know, we just need to, you need to contact the, the school or the district and we'll see if we have missed anyone that we could take care of that.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent on her report? I don't see any. So thank you, superintendent. Great report again. So we'll move on to item B, update on the dashboard, our local indicators. Thank you, Jason.
So thank you. As, as you may know, the dashboard has not functioned, the CDE's dashboard on our state mandated assessments has undergone lots of changes and not all of the data that is typically going to be available will be available this coming year. And throughout this, this school year, the 2020, 2021 school year, the CDE went back and forth as to whether or not the local indicators would be a part of the dashboarding could be included. And there is still some give and take in terms of whether or not that will happen. Typically, this report would be given in the late fall, early winter. However, given that we're right at the end of the year and it's a gray area, we want to make sure that we're providing that information to the public as well as to the board in terms of our local indicators. For those who not, who are not familiar with what our local indicators are, we are measured on the CDE's dashboard along six state indicators and five local indicators. The state indicators are what people are most familiar with typically. Things like the graduation rate, our performance on the CASP assessments, suspension rates, chronic absenteeism, et cetera. In addition to those six indicators, there are also the five local indicators. Those are areas where the state does not have an instrument that it uses to measure us, but rather we use our own local measurements. So for example, things such as having enough appropriately assigned teachers, making sure we have sufficiency of materials, implementation of a safe learning environment, things along those lines are the, the local indicators. The five specific areas are basic services. As I mentioned before, appropriately assigned teachers, instructional materials, safe schools. Implementate, the second priority two is implementation of academic standards within our classes. Parent engagement, the school climate, and access to a broad course of study. And I'll get into a bit more detail about each of those. So the first indicator, when we're looking at teachers being assigned to the appropriate classes and having the appropriate credentials, we were just talking about how wonderful our assistant superintendent of HR has been. When we look at these data regarding misassignments of teachers, misassignments of teachers to English learners and vacant positions, we see we have no misassignments as a school district with, which is an exceptional data point. When it comes to assigning students materials, every student was assigned the materials on time, which was no small task, especially given this year with the, the virtual options being in place and the limitations around COVID. One thing that's not surprising, but speaks to the work that our facilities department has done Chan, is we've seen improvement actually with our facilities. Some of this due to less wear and tear because we didn't have students on campus, but also because our maintenance and operations teams have continued to work on our facilities and improve those facilities throughout this year. In terms of implementation of academic standards, we see that when we look at our ELA math and social studies courses and we look at whether or not they are aligned with standards, we see that all of our standards are being implemented in ELA and maths, social studies and science. The only piece where we're looking at initial implementation has to do with the NGSS because we are moving forward with a new adoption next year. So we're going to be piloting elementary science next year. So we're at initial implementation, but once we've fully adopted our science, then we should expect that to be full implementation. Of course, even currently, our materials are standards aligned. So also looking further down, an area of strength has been our professional development system. And looking at the systems, things such as the work that was done this summer in preparation for online instruction, working with the Mosaic project, the work that we're doing around equity for grading. Not only do we look very strong in terms of having full implementation of a system for professional development, it's a sustained system that can continue whether or not individual people should transition to different positions or retire, et cetera. Implementing each of the academic standards when assessing our courses, all of our courses are standards aligned. And we look at all of these standards in each of these subject areas and found that they're meaningful implementation. In addition, we looked at whether or not we've had success at engaging in, this is again, a professional development aligned question, that's second of the two. Identifying the professional learning needs of groups of teachers and staff as a whole. We think that as a district, we have done a great job in that area and are able to assess that. Other areas that were assessed include parent engagement. And we saw a bit of this and it may be a bit repetitive when we're comparing this to the LCAP, but this again, we think is an area of strength for our district. When we look at the groups, actually, when I looked at last year's local indicators or rather the 18, 19 indicators, and we look at the number of groups that we're meeting with, specifically with historically marginalized and underserved communities, we're doing an even better job than we were then. And even then, we were a very strong district in that light. And so we're very proud of the work that we've done and also very appreciative of the feedback that we've gotten from our parents and our community. And finally, school climate. These data are based primarily on the California Healthy Kids Survey. But also we have local assessments that, that we've done such as we have a screener, universal screener that we have given to students at the beginning of this year. We are getting feedback actually also for students who are transitioning from elementary to middle and from middle to high school where their parent circles happening to help smooth that transition. And so based on the data that we have from our Healthy Kids Survey, we do meet the standard in terms of administering that survey, but also have risen above that in terms of providing services and actually taking action based on the feedback that we've gotten from the Healthy Kids Survey. And we see that with our social emotional supports and lessons that we have across our district. Access to a broad course of study, this assessment is conducted by looking This assessment is conducted by looking at our program planning guide, comparing that with the UC Doorways website, which contains all of the UC approved courses, as well as then assessing which of those, which courses we offer, which offer either concurrent and/or articulated credit, which is a form of getting co- both college and high school credit at the same time. And we found that all of our courses that are cop- or A through, should be A through G approved are, in fact, A through G approved and approved on UC Doorways website. We have eight hundred thirty students at the high school that have received early college credit through either an articulated course, some sort of CTE course, dual enrollment, or any other articulated course, which is where they've partnered with a community college instructor who's also assigning credits. We have a hundred forty-nine A through G approved courses and five hundred one sections of those courses offered at our high school. And so overall, we're very pleased with our local indicators. We have met all of the standards for the local indicators and are happy with the outcome, especially in a year like this. I think it speaks to the leadership of the board and superintendent as well as the hard work of the site staff and school leaders.
Any questions or comments for Jason?
Michael.
Hi, Dr. Ryman. I'm, I'm just curious, um, is this a combination of self-reporting data? Is there any auditing involved? How, how does data get generated and provided to CDE?
Sure, there's an assessment tool that the CDE provides. So there are data that can be audited by the state at any point, including the facilities inspection tool, for example, the California Healthy Kids Survey data, for example, the data from the UC Doorways, et cetera. So all of those data are verifiable and are a part of our self-assessment process.
And the, and the assignments, teacher assignments and things like that.
Every, every piece of data that's used for the self-assessment is verifiable, should we ever be subject to it.
Lavender was first, is it, did you have your hand up?
Can you talk a little bit about the teacher misassignments? Like what would, how does that happen? And, and how do you catch that?
Sure, and I'm sure Sherry could speak to it more eloquently. In a very general sense, lots of times in schools and school districts, it can be difficult to find enough math teachers or science teachers or teachers with a specific credential. Even teachers who have a full credential may not be available at certain times. So lots of school districts aren't able to fill those positions. Fortunately, in accord with the reporting guidelines, we have been able to fill all of those positions and don't have any current misassignments. I don't know, I'm sure if you.
You would get a misassignment if the person did not have the appropriate credential for the course that they're teaching. So, it's so loud. So again, it has to do with not having the right credential. And sometimes what, what could happen is there could be a nuance in the course. So we might code a course a certain way and have it, have the, and then assign the person to teach it and then find out that the way the course was coded doesn't match. So we've had to fix that a couple of times. Sometimes they move teachers around at the last minute thinking, oh, they'd be great at teaching blank, this one period. It's only one period and it's a misassignment. So we actually work with our secondary administrators a lot on credentialing requirements so that they understand those little nuances. So that's a way to do it, to get a misassignment. Sometimes if during the reporting period, if the job hasn't been filled and it started with a substitute, that could be listed as a misassignment. So there's a variety of things that lead to that category. But we really, like Jason said, we, Dr. Ryman said, we really try to stay on top of it and, and have our kids with highly qualified teachers. Plus the other thing, there are creative ways to get teachers' credentials. You can get GLAPs and STIPS and PIPs and added authorizations and all kinds of things. And so our credential tech's really good at that as well. So we comply with ed code, but we always, you know, we look at creative solutions.
I just wanted to say, Dr. Ryman, I know that I've said it in the past and, you know, we're talking about this last school year and what we've been through with COVID-19. But to see us meet these standards and to provide social and emotional supports and provide greater engagement with our community for underrepresented groups speaks to the work that your team has been doing. And, you know, in the middle of a global pandemic, being able to, to provide those supports and, and to be able to help out our community and our kids, it just speaks volumes to the work that you and your team have done. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll follow up on what Lavender just said. I was really impressed by the number of groups that have developed groups of parents and, and students as well at the various schools and, and the interactions with those. I think that's really terrific work on those. And also the number, eight hundred and thirty students at the high school getting college credits, very big number in a high school of three thousand kids. That's over twenty-five percent of those students getting some kind of college credit. That's a pretty remarkable statistic. So congratulations on that as well. Anybody else with a thought or any comment?
Great work.
Great work as always.
So thanks very much, Jason. We'll move on to the, this year's version of the LCAP. Who's got that one? Is, you still?
So, so this is not a presentation. However, I do want to front load the board to let them know that subsequent to our previous board meeting, the draft version of the LCAP was posted to our district website. The only changes that have occurred in the interim period have been there are changes to, with the addition of four and a half FTE, additional campus patrollers, a decrease of three noon supervisors and an increase of three FTE teachers for Castro Valley Virtual Academy. And those adjustments are also reflected in the parent brochure. We did not receive any official responses beyond the community outreach that we did prior to the board meeting. So there's nothing else to report in terms of feedback from the community.
Quick question for you. How many campus patrollers do we have in the district? Maybe more for Sherry, but.
We, we have a list.
Put you on the spot here. I know this is out of the blue.
He can, um, we have it actually on there. We have a chart.
Pull that up. It takes just a minute.
About ten?
Something like that.
Eleven.
I was just curious about that, so thank you, though.
We have eleven campus patrollers and eleven. But for next year, we have eleven social workers.
And our three secondary, that's just.
The, the campus patrollers, yeah. The social workers are throughout the district.
Great, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Jason. I did, no, 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 no. Oh, you know, Mike, I can't see you. So you may have to alert me when you're raising your hand. You're, you only come on screen when you're talking.
Sorry, sorry. I, I just wanted to thank everyone. I, it, when you come on as a new board member, you kind of follow into an alphabet soup of a lot of acronyms. And I, I appreciate how you've helped me as a new board member to understand this process. And it really reflects a lot of community engagement. And I know that we're always striving to engage the community even more. So, but just thank you. I, I, it really, it does appear we've done our homework within our school communities to make sure that this really reflects the needs of those students who, who need these resources. But thank you.
So can I move to adopt the LCAP?
Okay, sure. I wasn't sure whether you had anything else you wanted to say.
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will second it.
It felt like we were wrapping up, so I'm sorry.
Can I second it from, from afar?
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote here, Lavender.
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes to make it five to zero. We passed your modified LCAP. That's great. Thanks for all the hard work. Those things are never easy to put together, but this year is even crazier. So move on to item D, the budget.
Yes, thank you. So following what Dr. Mark Ryman mentioned, the only adjustments made to the budget are the positions that he mentioned, totaling five hundred thousand dollars. So we've adjusted the budget to reflect this five hundred thousand dollar changes. And so what you have, or what's included in the packet is the presentation with the updated numbers and also the, the SACS forms that, that we're required to submit. So in terms of the, I just wanted to update you on the reserve. It is, we're at eight million dollars and the percentage is about seven point eleven percent.
We'll point out that we've spent a lot of time on the budget before, but we're required by law to vote on it in the month of June. So we've had previous meetings, we've gone over the LCAP and the budget in considerable detail. Dot?
Considering in past years, we've been looking at three and a half percent, three percent reserve, this is amazing in such a difficult year. And I just want to say that publicly. Thank you for being so diligent and transparent with all of the things that you do to make sure we have a balanced budget, that you present us with something that we don't have to spend a lot of time picking at. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is an action item.
I'd like to move approval to adopt the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
I'll second it.
Terrific, so moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, Lavender.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so we've approved the budget, five to zero. Thanks to all, especially thanks to Susie and her team for the budget. Thanks to Jason and his team for the LCAP. Lot of hard work. So we'll move on now to superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a, a couple of things I wanted to just share with you that we have been talking with a couple of students and Castro Valley Pride about the pathways, the rainbow pathways. And today, we actually, with Mr. McMaster and Ms. Meadows, we met with them because they talked about Marion Meadows and Nick kind of shared how we would love to actually develop lessons around that. And as a part of that, do this project. So they were very excited and we're gonna, they're gonna work on that and we'll come to you with some plans. And they do want to raise money. The students want to raise the funds to, to actually help us with that. So I wanted to say that, that's pretty exciting. The other thing is, I see the, there are, there's an assembly bill, I believe it's four twenty-two, that's moving forward about mental health and lessons that need to be created for mental health, not just, you know, hey, do districts just deciding all of the great things they're doing, but also having specific lessons that are done for students in, once in elementary, once in middle and once in high school. And I think, you know, oftentimes when these things come up, people push back and go, one more thing. But I was really pleased to be at the Legislative Action Committee at the state. And we have two students who are absolutely incredible. And, you know, we talked about, there is just such a need. For example, when children are struggling with mental health issues and they don't know the name, they don't know that it's normal, that it really causes a lot of angst for them and also for their families. So I supported them and I, they've also asked for what we are doing in our district for social emotional support and creating a safe environment for our students. I sent that email out to them, to them and CSBA, and they were very excited. So I got an email today that said, can you tell us more about that? So I'm gonna connect them to Dr. Ryman and Marion Meadows. But I think it's really great that these kids were like, no, we need this. And I'm very proud of them. And then the last thing is that we have a barbecue usually to thank our folks who work, our colleagues who work over the summer with custodians and maintenance and district office to kind of prepare for the year. We usually would barbecue, the four of us would barbecue. This time we actually have somebody hired because of the, some of the restrictions. But that is going to be on August third, so put it on your calendar. And if you can attend, just come and enjoy. And that's, I think that's it. And we are planning our beginning of the year activities when everybody returns. So that's it. That's all I had. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask when we could possibly, I will contact trustee Whitaker and trustee Theodore to see when it's possible for us to have the Board Policy Committee in July sometime so that in August, at the first board meeting in August, I would like to bring, Susie and I would like to bring something to you for facility use to have some time opened up for our community. So, thank you.
So I have not represented the board since our last meeting, but I did decorate my house to support Castro Valley Pride. And I have rainbow lights on my house. Very exciting at night, I can't sleep because my window is. But it is beautiful. I could, but, oh, I would be in trouble. And then I will be out of town, July twenty-fifth through August first. And I obviously will send a note to the, the board and, and to you, Parveen, so that you're aware. But I just wanted to give you a heads up with that.
Thank you. Michael? Are you there?
Yeah, sorry, just unmuted. I too have not represented the board, like Lavender. I, I did decorate my house. And I want to thank Castro Valley Pride for, for, for doing that, for us to support us in that. I, I also just think it's fantastic, Parveen, you mentioned the students who are, are working on mental health, de-stigmatizing it is important and grateful that they are leading that work. You got a board member here who, who's faced depression himself. And I, I, I want to be a part of that solution. And I hope we all can be modeled that for our students and make sure that they know that they will be supported. And it's just wonderful to see that. I just want to thank Amy for hooking me up while I'm in this meeting remotely. So thank you for your help. Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Mike. Dolly?
Yes, so I went to a couple of things, the Regional Policy Board. And there, there was a bit of a talk on the budget. This is a board that is for like the SULPA or the, us and the surrounding districts and special ed directors. They presented their budget and we were able to vote on that and also vote on the budget for the actual SULPA. Second thing I went to was the Castro Valley Community Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Training. And there are going to be some, no, I don't know, actions or other things to kind of bring this to the Castro Valley community coming up in the summer or around the time that school starts. Let's see, the other thing was the Special Eden Area ROP Board Meeting. I think that's the same thing I talked about. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is tomorrow at seven PM is a viewing of a film called racially charged, America's misdemeanor problem. And the way to find this, I was trying to find the, oh, doc on here, but if you email me, I could email you the Zoom link to watch that. There'll also be at seven forty, a facilitated discussion. Let me see if I, now all I have is a Zoom link right here. So, but if you email me. So but if you email me, I will be able to like forward that to you if you would like.
Yeah, we've posted it on the Community Alliance website because the League of Women Voters actually sent us that. So really exciting to have that.
I have not represented the board since our last board meeting, but I will be out of town on the, let's see, twenty seventh through the thirtieth. So this Sunday through next Wednesday and then August second through ninth.
Okay, so I have been able to do a couple of things because we've loosened up now a little bit at the schools and I was able to visit some of the summer schools. And so I was at Canyon where I got to talk to the custodians and at Creekside, we're going to talk to the the team that delivers lunches to every to the kids. I think it's great. I think it's sad that we have to do that, but I think it's great that we're able to do that to distribute a breakfast and a lunch to kids that need it. Yesterday, I was at Castro Valley High School, visited all the classrooms and also saw the custodians and the lunchroom personnel. That is going really well, remarkably well over there, I have to say, better than in previous years. They have a lot of kids over there this year. Of course, we knew summer school would be bigger this year and I'm glad that it is. And this morning I was at Castro Valley Elementary School and saw all their classrooms. And that was also one really terrifically well. And I really enjoyed seeing the little kids because they're always so happy and having such a great time with their teachers and everything. So really terrific and it's terrific to be able to actually see people face to face for a change rather than on screen like we have been for so long. So that's all I have. Oh, one last thing I'll say. Well, next week I'll be at Stanton Independent. But on July sixth at noon, Rotary Club is going to partner again with Castro Valley Science. And our presentation there will be from NASA Ames. And they'll be talking about the Mars missions and then Mars rovers. So it's open to the public. This is obviously will still be a Zoom meeting. But everybody's welcome to join in on that and hope to see you there. So anyway, that's all I have. So I will adjourn the meeting and say thanks to everybody who attended the meeting, whether here in the in the boardroom or whether on Zoom. And thanks to Mike for calling in. Hope you have a great time over there. And thanks especially to Sherry for her last meeting. So thanks for sixteen great years. Thanks, everybody.